Court meeting in order. Y'all please rise and join me in a moment of reflection on the business that has to be for us this evening. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all.
Clerk, please take your roles.
Alderman Vassal.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, Treasurer, and Attorney.
All right. There's no special presentations tonight. The consent calendar, we've got the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting September 20th, 2022, the approval of the payroll and the altar list for the period ending September 23rd, 2022, and a motion to approve a request for a special events permit for Trinity Christian College to conduct their annual Fall Fest 3.1K fundraiser on November 5th. Request is being reviewed and approved by the Police Department, Building Department, and Public Works Department. Moved by Alderman Clifford.
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Vassal.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
All right. No special seal bids.
In my report, a couple of things. On October 29th this year, from 8:00 until 11:00 in the morning, Republic Refuge will be running an e-waste recycling drop-off over at the Metro Lot over on Southwest Highway. So if you're a resident, you've got to show ID to that, but that'll be from 8:00 in the morning to 11:00 in the morning on October 29th. Next, just keep in mind, there's a bunch, a good number of holiday and Halloween events that are coming up, whether it be at Lake Catherine, the Rec Department and such. So you know, take your family out and enjoy the times. And then also, just as a friendly reminder, our next meeting is the Mayor for a Day where the Women's Club runs their annual, the eighth graders from various high school or grammar schools in the town write an essay, and then we have them for a little pizza party before they come over, and then we run a little mock city council meeting, and they sit in our council meeting, and we give them our award. So that is next, the next meeting on the 18th. And that's the end of my report. City Clerk?
No reports this evening.
City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mayor. No reports tonight.
All right. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
Communications, anyone here? Okay. Citizens wishing to address the council, start this way.
Mayor, can I say something?
Sure.
Please. The only thing I wanted to mention was, on September 21st, I took the honor flight to Washington DC. It was a great event, and I really enjoyed it, but I found one thing very, very special to the city of Palis Heights about it. When we arrived over at Midway Airport, and we got through all the processing and everything else, you're sitting at the table, they had like three tables full of donuts and coffee for everybody while they were waiting for the flight. Those donuts came from those guys.
Great.
And they've been doing it for the honor flights for years. So I'd just like to make a public announcement of it and a special thank you to them.
Yeah, definitely.
For all their cooperation.
It's great that they showed their support. That's super. Thank you. Thanks for sharing that.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Again, citizens wishing, Bob, you want to start there? Name and address, please.
My name is Bob Grossard. I live at 12904 South Gulf Lane. I've been there since 1983, and have also been chairman of the Business Economic Advisor Committee for 12 years previously. What I did after the last meeting was, which I hope a lot of you guys did the same thing, is I actually went back and watched the tape, because if it's really going to be a citizen's concern, we should really listen to what the citizen's going to say and try to say, is it factual, or is there really a rebuttal to it that makes sense? So that's what I did, so I'm just going to show you where we're at from that. I showed you the first slide last week, or two weeks ago, and this is our business district with signs about no parking, so I think it's pretty obvious there is a problem with parking, and that's all I'm going to say about that. I really want to get to the other parts of the issues. Some of the residents, I think, would like a residence-only sign, and they would want it to be, hey, no business community, no schools, no libraries, they don't want traffic, congestion, pollution. These are all the things that they listed, and maybe they want to sign along the way for their property. But let's go through that. First, let's talk about, again, the role of the alderman. Tough job, you know, when you're elected to do it, and we thank you for that, but what are you trying to do? Well, really, you're really trying to represent 12,000-plus residents and businesses of 300 in Palis Heights, but you're also trying to listen to the individual concerns of the residents and seeing if you can help alleviate some of their concerns. So this is really a tough job, and we thank you for what you do. What I tried to do again is just to summarize the key issues about the business community's needs and also the issues that were raised by the residents at the last meeting. So these are hopefully the key issues. As far as the business, there's a lack of adequate parking at peak periods. The solution was identified in the comprehensive plan. The implementation of the solution is up for a vote tonight. This problem has existed for over 10 years, since ever since we started the committee back in 2010. We've been talking about parking, and we're still talking about it in 2022, and there's a real issue is, not only can we not support the current businesses, what do we do with the new businesses as they move into Palis Heights? That's just going to put more pressure on the parking. But let's talk about the residents and their issues that they raised at the last meeting on September the 20th, and let's hear what they're really trying to say. Okay, the first one is, do you want to live near a parking lot? And it's kind of funny, I was telling someone a few days ago, I've lived near one for 33 years and never even thought about that I live near one. I live over by Independent School District. It's been there, you know, ever since I moved in, I built over there. I've had no issues with that, and besides that, there's a water tower. I know they're trying to get some of you to say, well, if you were an alderman, would you live over there? Well, actually, there's been two over there. One, just recently, who was a former alderman, bought a house kitty-corner from me and put up quite a bit of money to upgrade the house. They rented it for a couple of years, they put it on the market, and the house sold within 30 days, two doors from the parking lot. So there's an alderman. Another alderman, when we actually built the house, he lived right across the street from me, and he moved about 10 years, 15 years ago. So, and there is another house sold, the house actually right next to the school parking lot was, it bought and sold about five years ago, over a short period of time. And this kind of little story in the bottom of the battery is how the positives part of the battery is small and the negative part is big. Sometimes that's what people are, you know, they're easier to be negative than they are to be positive, so that's just the way people are, I guess. Let's talk about one of the issues that was raised by one of the residents and said, my property will decrease in value by 10 or 15%. Well, there's a lot of things that really affect your property, the quality of schools, the age or condition of your property, the size and usable space in your house, interest rates, economy, inflation, maybe some people like to be close to entertainment or, you know, restaurants, the actual number of houses for sale, and actually, if you're near a park or a parking lot or whatever, there's a lot of factors, and no realtor can tell you, this is 2% and that's 4%, it just doesn't work that way. So let's take an example, though. There was actually a house right next to Franklin's Lot. It was sold on 6220. The owner originally bought it on 5117, he paid $125,000, and he sold it on 62 for $177,000. That's a $52,000 gain on a house that's right next to the parking lot. So that defeats the idea that your property would necessarily go down living next to a parking lot. Okay, we talked about talking to some realtors. Don talked to one, and I think her response, if I remember, was, I would not call it a selling feature, but I would not highlight it as being a negative. I talked to another realtor, and she said, it's interesting, some realtors say when you live near a park, they lower the value. In her case, she raises the value. She thinks it's an asset. So, you know, beauty's kind of the beholder, and I'm sure if you talk to 50 realtors, you're going to get 50 opinions. There's no one's going to tell you it's one thing or the other.
Park or parking lot?
Either one.
Big difference.
No, I'm sorry. Your question is, the realtor said, if they live across from a park, some realtors say they lower the price 10%, she raised it 10%, for a park.
We're talking about parking lot.
For a park, yes. Then some people raised the question that many public buildings are in residential areas, cars speed, drivers text, they go through the stop signs. Well, I guess, where do you really want these buildings to be located? A lot of people move into Palis Heights because they like a library, they like a recreation center, they like a college. These are some of the reasons I think I moved into Palis Heights, it's a nice community. And have you any used any of these features since you were in Palis Heights? Well, if you don't want a parking lot next to you, where do you park when you go to the library? Or if you take your kids to independent school, where do you park? You park down, let them walk three blocks so you don't interfere with the residents? I don't think so. And to me, that's why we have a police department. If cars are speeding, drivers are texting, or they're going through stop signs, you should call the police, and I'm sure they would be glad to look into that. One person talked about change. Change is very hard. I agree with that, and I can't remember, he had a slogan, but anyway, he wanted the same thing now as he had 30 years ago. Well, life isn't that way, and, you know, they say as you get older, the only thing that changes in your contact list is you lose a lot of friends and you end up doctors. So I mean, that's just one of the features of life, that your health isn't the same, your family's not the same, your job situation's not the same, and I think change is scary, but not as scary as staying the same. So I think that's the answer to that one. Someone, or some people raised, 90% of the parking lots are empty, there's tons of parking, and if anybody, any business needs parking, it should be paid for by the business, and a study was done to support adequate parking. Well, I can tell you, being on the Economic Development Committee for 10 years, we did a study. We actually had the police department go around and keep track of the parking in all the lots over five days at different times of the day, and that study showed that at peak times, there is a problem with parking. And the comprehensive plan had many public hearings, they talked, businesses came, and they all said, there's a problem with parking. And this has been a discussion item on the Business Economic Advisor Committee for over 10 years, and parking is still a problem. Not every day, not every hour, but at peak times, it is a problem. Let's talk about the city lot. Some said, well, it's not a capacity. I would agree with that. Maybe sometimes it is, maybe sometimes it's not. But what's the real problem there? Well, number one, there's no sidewalks to get from the parking lot to 123rd Street. And if you really want to get through there, you have to walk through numerous onlit parking lots to get to the city lot. And unfortunately, it snows in Chicago in the winter, and when it does, there's mounds of snow on both sides of each building, so you've got to either walk in the street, there's no path to get to the parking lot. And then some people say, well, the parking lot is well lit, is not lit up well, and I think that's partly because the city was trying to tone down the lights so they wouldn't interfere or get in trouble with some of the residents. Shared parking should be expanded. 100% agree with that. The only problem is, we've tried that and talked to almost every business along Harlem Avenue, and they're all private businesses, and they all have their own property, and the city can do nothing to say, you have to do this. So we've tried that, it's a great idea, it just doesn't work. Someone said, well, the parking lots aren't listed on some of the documents as a parking lot. Well, if this is true, they should be. I don't know why they're not, but if it's a parking lot, it's a parking lot. Let's call it a parking lot. I totally agree with that. Someone raised a question about businesses leave because of higher rent. Well, actually, that, whether it's true or not, I don't know, but actually, if they stayed, it would just exasperate the problem we already have with parking, and so I don't know why, that's why that kind of would be beneficial. Someone raised a question about rooftop tap, creates a lot of issues. Well, that thing is about a block or so away from what we're proposing in the parking lot. If there's a violation or a problem, call the police, that's what they're there for. And, but it's got nothing to do with the parking lot. Might be a complaint, but it's got nothing to do with the parking lot, in my mind. Someone suggested we should update the comprehensive plan. Well, that's interesting, but that plan cost us over $40,000, the one we just did. There was numerous meetings, public hearings, updated drafts, and the city planners that work on these type of things say you should do it every 10 years, and the last one was updated on September the 9th, 2019. What I think we should do is use the one we've got. That's what I think. And to me, I guess that asks a question to the residents, if we revise a thing and the same proposed solution for parking was included, which I think it would be, would they not be supportive of it? I would doubt it. Let's talk about taxes. Everybody said, well, listen to the residents, and I'm a resident, and I agree with that, but let's listen to businesses, too. Actually, a study was done by Palis Heights, and what they showed was comparable taxes from residents, $350,000, and actually, the small area called Old Palace generated $351. Well, let's look at that diagram. It's kind of hard to see on this thing, but that little green space is the two or three blocks that we're talking about in the business district. They generated $351,000. It takes 29 blocks of Palis Heights residents to equal that amount of taxes. So we can't just say, let's just listen to the residents and listen to businesses. That small group of people, if they left, would cause you significant harm to your budget. Someone said, well, who's going to benefit if we buy the lot? And some said only Capri, some said residents will park a lot and not use multiple businesses. I don't know if that's approvable fact, I don't know that it is, and some said more parking will kill small businesses. I can't understand how that could happen. And the limo service was here last time, and they said, I'll park anywhere the city says they want me to park, I'll park there. It's not a problem, they're not going to just take over the Capri lot. So tonight, you're voting. The debate, I think, is over. Number one, it should have been over when we signed the comprehensive plan, and it definitely should have been over when we bought the city property, the property we're talking about, and then it should have been over when we decided to use more engineering to do even more work. Tonight's not the night to debate, do we need parking or don't need parking, we should do that. Tonight is the extra to vote on what we're trying to do. So I guess you're going to determine tonight, are you part of the parking problem or part of the parking solution, and let's work together and make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. Sure.
Dan Nicholson, 12313 South 71st Court. I suppose my rebuttal would be, would you rather have no parking signs or for-sale signs in the area? I guess that's another thing to consider. First of all, thank you, everyone. Like hundreds of others in and out of the city of Palis Heights, my brothers watched the most recent city council meeting on the outstanding PHTV4's YouTube channel. Check it out if you haven't yet, and read the story in the regional, which is also excellent. We were all horrified at the ways members of the city council in their official capacity as city officials treated an American citizen, voter, resident, and constituent. My brothers were even more horrified by the repulsive, disgusting, misogynistic, chauvinistic, sexist language a city official used through his city microphone to refer to our mom, a Vietnam widow. Let me tell you a quick story. My mom, who escaped Hitler and Stalin, war-torn Europe as a little girl in 1940s, fell in love with a first-generation American patriot from Marquette Park. They both loved freedom and hated Bolsheviks. This young man served as a United States Army captain, and among other places, served in Vietnam. On April 26, 1970, he was commanding officer of Charlie Company, 1st Battalion, 7th Cavalry, Gary Owen. During a recon and force mission in Bin Long Province, he forward-positioned his men to interdict an ambush of the 2nd Platoon who was engaged in intense .30 caliber machine gun fire. With exceptionally valorous action and disregard for his personal safety, he repeatedly exposed himself to intense enemy fire while positioning his men to return fire and to help carry the wounded and dead back to the medic. He was killed in action instantly, hopefully painlessly, while doing so, his eyeglasses destroyed by the multiple fatal machine gun shots. He was awarded a Silver Star among other medals. He had a closed casket funeral and left my 30-year-old mom, a single mother and Vietnam widow, bereft of the love of her life. That woman is one of these aldermen call the B-word. One of this woman's sons is a world-renowned surgeon who donates many hours to his local Veterans Administration hospital. Another of her sons is a highly successful network engineer and served for many years in United States long-range surveillance unit. These LRSs are elite units requiring that you are both airborne and ranger-qualified before you can even get a sniff at serving in one. They jump out of airplanes in HEHO, in HALO missions, tens of miles behind enemy lines, and live in isolation for up to 30 days while surveilling enemy positions and activity. Forever, they and others will remember what you called their brother, me, and their mother. Voters and residents have an elephant's memory. As businesses come and go, we won't forget the despicable conduct and words that we could all hear again on the YouTube channel. I would not that, I would not want any of this as part of my legacy as a city official, especially when packaged with a pension for slots and parking lots. So let's get to maybe a solution which Caitlin mentioned last week or last meeting, and I've mentioned a couple of times. I think the city leaders are falling into a trap. You're viewing this as a parking lot issue as a zero-sum game. You're treating this situation as if there are winners, businesses, and losers, residents who oppose it. That's a sad reflection on the ability to analyze municipal and political issues. Many of you have simply decided to ram this parking lot down our opposing throats, assuring your victory and our loss. Great politicians and great leaders understand that nothing local is a zero-sum game. Rather, they strive to achieve win-win outcomes, not win-lose ones. Indeed, one local business leader, who I won't mention, but who has been here, seemed to have broached an agreement with a local business that is right next to his, which at first was contentious, but is now seems to be a product of teamwork, and there is no contention anymore. Instead, everybody's happy, and they can enjoy the delicious food at this restaurant. If I was an alderperson or the mayor, I would try to use this as precedent, broker a business-to-business partnership that would solve this very inconsistent, very infrequent parking lot issue. I would use my political savvy to broker business-to-business agreements between restaurants that need parking during the closed business hours of the restaurants, of the other businesses like banks and breakfast-lunch restaurants that are closed during these businesses' peak hours. That is what an insightful, intelligent city council would do and should do, in my opinion. Seek the win-win. As others have said, I think it is time to go back to the drawing board, and I'm sorry that this comprehensive plan took a lot of money, but this city is dynamic and the average age is changing, it's getting younger, and the kids are all around the neighborhood. So I think if you go back to the drawing board and work as a team, you can find a way better, way safer, way cheaper, and way more democratic solution that are win-win, not win-lose, and I can't imagine any resident, including me, would be opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the first row? Second row? No, that's all right, go ahead. I apologize. Name and address, please.
Kristin Restivo, 12423 South 71st Court. There have been comparisons made between this proposed lot and the lot on the west side of Harlem. However, there are differences when it comes to pedestrian safety, which I documented in a video that was sent prior to the last city council. The west side parking lot sits inland and does not sit on the main 123rd Street thoroughfare. There is a sidewalk from the west that one can travel on when heading towards the stoplight at Harlem. At the intersection of 123rd and 72nd Court, there are two stop signs, just as there is on 123rd and 71st Court. But the cars exiting the parking lot are a bit down the block to the south, there is a crosswalk, and then the sidewalk continues toward the stoplight. Over here in the 2nd ward, when our kids head to Palmer Park, tropical snow, the pool, and PBO, we tell them, be safe and cross at the stoplight. However, we also tell them, look both ways at 123rd and 71st Court to make sure the cars stop at the stop signs. As you pedal through that intersection, immediately look for cars exiting the driveways on your left and right. And then, just a second later, look again for cars to the left and right at the next two driveways. Last, a few seconds breather before the final two driveways on the left and right as you approach the stoplight. Oh, and be aware of any cars parked along the street that may be pulling away, too. That is eight areas, nine, if you include this proposed parking lot, plus street parking, that in a matter of seconds, a child must assess, all while riding on the street, not on a sidewalk, and without crosswalks, and while thinking about what flavor tropical snow they will order. There are children living next door to this proposed lot, directly behind, across the street, kitty-corner, and an additional eight families nearby that I know of. That's 12 families with children within a block and a half of this proposed lot. Before your final vote, please consider the safety of these young War II residents and those in every other ward that make that same trip to and from our side of town. Thank you for listening.
We'll go row by row, it makes it easier, huh?
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Jotter, and I live at 12302 South 71st Avenue. I am here this evening to once again urge the council to vote no on the proposed ordinance to rezone 12303 South 71st Court as commercial and constructive municipal parking lot. The proposed lot is directly adjacent to the home where I live, with my husband, excuse me, three-year-old, and newborn sons. This is my third time speaking with you on this issue, and I have yet to feel that my voice is being heard. During these meetings, the 2019 comprehensive plan for Palis Heights has been referenced at length, including tonight, and I'm actually urging you to follow that plan, not skip important steps that are outlined within. I urge you to focus on the parking infrastructure that currently exists, both municipal and private. The current parking footprint has over 300 spots on the east side of Harlem that are drastically underutilized at all times of day. While I understand that a portion of these spots are privately owned, I urge the city to once again have meaningful conversations regarding shared spaces and the current footprint. We have been told that the new parking lot is needed because the existing parking infrastructure is lacking. The no parking and tow warning signs detract patrons from our businesses, and the disrepair of lots leave guests unable to access the businesses with ease. I ask you how this proposed municipal lot will fix those issues. If the proposed lot is voted in, will the existing no parking and tow signs be removed by businesses? Will the landlords and business owners resurface their parking lots to make them safe for patrons? How will adding another surface lot that is most likely going to fall into disrepair a solution to our problem? If patrons are not willing to walk to the existing municipal lot that is equidistant, if not closer, to the businesses on Harlem, what will make them use the new lot? We seem to be singularly focused on attracting commercial investors to Palis Heights, while forgetting that the investors you are seeking to attract are also residents and potential homeowners, not just commercial clients. I would argue that community and commerce go hand in hand. Commercial investors are not interested in a community with an aging population that does not have discretionary income to spend at their outlets. It's been said that sacrifices need to be made for progress, and that my neighbors and I have chose to live near this commercial district, and that's true. We did choose to live near the commercial district, in a residential area that is within walking distance to these businesses, not for the commercial district to be rezoned into our backyard. Why would new residents want to move to old Palis if the city can choose to spot rezone at will and the commercial district could be literally in your backyard, which is my case? Spot rezoning this corner is an irrevocable decision that cements the fact that our city is not concerned with the voices of its constituents. It deters anyone from making their home in Palis Heights. Why should you invest your hard-earned money in a home in Palis Heights when the city works directly against you to promote their commercial interests? And why are the residents of the 2nd ward the only people that need to make this sacrifice when the business owners and landlords in Harlem cannot even sacrifice their own pride to come to a shared parking agreement? I urge you all to reconsider the sacrifices you are encouraging the residents of the 2nd ward to undertake, and vote no on the proposed ordinance. The population of Palis Heights is aging, and young families will not make investments in a community that does not respect their rights, opinions, or pocketbooks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in that row?
Harlan Wyvoda, 7640 West 135th Street, Orland Park. As a resident of the city of Palis Heights for 32 years, I'm not really comfortable, I would be much more comfortable if another business was presenting this change, rather than the city of Palis Heights being the judge, the jury, in this decision. If another business was presenting this to take over this parking lot, then we would have more control over the landscaping, more control over the lights, more control over everything, but now you're basically putting it into your ujits, so you're... But now you're basically putting it into your, so you're the judge, the jury, and you make all the decisions, and there's nothing that we can really do. I, being on the furthest end of Palis Heights, obviously this parking lot is not going to affect me, but I do not like the precedent of what the city is doing in making this particular decision and deciding how they want to do it, when they want to do it, and where they want to do it, without a business backing that decision. I would suggest the possibility of, my wife and I went and looked at two parking lots the other night after we left a city council meeting. I would suggest you take your art park and put it in that thing, since you already spent the money for the lot, and then make the art park your parking lot. Thank you.
Back row? Anyone? Yeah.
Joan DeVito, 12232 South 71st Avenue. I am asking that you vote no to the zoning change, and I have a few points to share with you. Spot zoning is a process of singling out a small parcel of land for a use classification totally different from the surrounding area that benefits the owner of such property, and to the detriment of these surrounding owners. Another point, there is no comparison of west Harlem to east Harlem. My neighbors and I live in a section of Palis Heights that already has a high-traffic area with two elementary schools, and their entrances are in our neighborhood; a high school whose access is on Oak Park Avenue; Trinity College, whose entrance is on Cheyenne Drive; four churches, and the library, whose access is through our neighborhood; a senior living center, which has a left-turn lane right into our neighborhood off of Route 83. And now you're asking us to just accept this proposed parking lot, which will also place a lot more traffic into our neighborhood. Why? Why should we accept it? Well, then, we brought up LaGrange, so now we can become more like LaGrange. Let me tell you about LaGrange. LaGrange's speed limit is 25 miles per hour when you're entering into the beginning of LaGrange. As you get closer into the bustling downtown area of LaGrange, it's reduced to 20 miles per hour. They have speed-limit monitoring signs, so you know if you're exceeding the speed limit. Also, as you enter the bustling downtown area of LaGrange, there are pedestrian walkways, which offer the right-of-way to the visitors, and most importantly, the residents of LaGrange. We will have that? I think not. As you stated in your comprehensive plan, you are having a difficult time convincing IDOT to reduce the speed limit on Harlem Avenue. Another thing I've noticed, which was very upsetting to me, is that we have a city employee who is coaching a valet business owner on what to say, and convincingly say, and the valet owner said, quote, "I will follow whatever the city asks me to do." What is going on here? Why is a city employee allowed to coach a business owner during a city council meeting? Also, the current "Do not park here" signs in the parking lots will not be removed unless the store owner decides to remove them, because like you all keep saying, it's private property. So this proposed lot will not delineate the signs. You have an ordinance on your books, which I've talked about numerous times. It's number 153.55.1. Restaurants, bars, or other establishments for the sale and consumption of food and alcohol, number of parking spaces equal 50% of facility capacity plus one space per employee. This ordinance has never been enforced. For many years now, and now you're asking the residents to accept the fact that the elected officials who keep messing this up year after year after year, now we have to accept that you're putting a parking lot and running it through a very beautiful part of our town. You're asking us to see this as an improvement, and it's not. It's a detriment, even though we, the residents, lose all around. Lastly, please, do not devalue our neighborhood. Do not devalue our homes. Please vote no.
I'm Mike DeVito. Live at 12232 South 71st Avenue, Palis Heights. I've been to every one of these meetings, except for the last one. I was in the hospital having surgery, so I'm out now, but I was able to watch the video of the last meeting, and there's a couple things I just wanted to point out. It seems to me that our city officials, for some reason, act like the residents that oppose this parking lot are some kind of rebels, and that we don't want change, and we're going to fight that progress no matter what, and we want things to stay the same. That's not the case. We just want positive change that's good for everybody. So that was one of the things I wanted to mention. The second thing was, because this is important to me, and one of the discussions that came up, watching the video. My father was a World War II vet. He enlisted the day after Pearl Harbor. He was sent to Germany, was part of General Patton's army. He was in the trenches during the German winter, suffered frostbite on both feet, had his left eardrum blown out from the constant shelling. His shoulder was severely separated, and it bothered him the remainder of his short life. He died in his 50s. My grandfather was a World War II vet. He fought in the army, serving his country with honor. I only bring this up because I think it's important, you know, I feel like, you know, everyone looks at us like we're just troublemakers, and we just don't want change, and that's not true. So, what was the next thing I wanted to mention here? Oh, one of the most upsetting things at that last meeting was, I think it was one of the aldermen, I might be wrong, it might just be one of the elected officials, but they yelled that at one point, that "That's not helping your cause." Well, that made me think how important our freedoms really are, and we need to have the ability to speak, and I think over the last few years in particular, you know, we've really been hit on freedom of speech, and freedom of religion, and the press, and those are all the First Amendment rights, and we need to be able to voice our concerns without, you know, it being a problem. And I think that the elected officials look at us as a problem that they need to deal with, and I think that whole philosophy needs to end. So lastly, I've lived in Palis Heights for 33 years. I sent all four of my children through our public school system. I've supported our restaurants, stores, medical and insurance offices, and I just can't believe that our elected officials are not supporting us on this. I don't want to lose 10 to 15% value on my home. Someone mentioned that's not the case. It is. I've talked to real estate appraisers and real estate salespeople. This fact alone should make everyone vote no on this project, because you're hurting citizens. Lastly, it's astonishing to me that our residents that have come to every meeting continue to say we don't want this. We want a beautiful and safe neighborhood, but we also don't want it to be dangerous, and this is what's happening here. So, you know, there has to be something that can be done to make this a beautiful neighborhood for all, not just for some.
Hello, Denise Hyker. I'm the Assistant Chair of the REC Advisory Board in Palis Heights. My address is 57 Country Square Row. I've been up here before, August 16th, because there is a new ordinance that is being voted on. It was being voted on that night, on August 16th. It was deferred to be voted on again tonight. I'll just cut to the chase, I realize you have a very big agenda tonight. The ordinance, as it reads, has an error in it. It's number 16 on your agenda. It says, "Motion to adopt the ordinance amending the city's code, Section 3450, 3454, pertaining to the REC Advisory Board." The error that is on this new ordinance that was written is under 3454, "The duties of the Board." It says, "The Board's purpose, the primary purpose of the RAB should serve an advisory capacity to the mayor, city council, administrative staff regarding parks," and the word that is missing is "facilities," "recreation programs that promote and stimulate public interest." This word is also omitted in B1, advising the mayor, city council, administrative staff on recreation programs, and the word "facilities" is missing in "parks," and it's also missing in B3, advise administrative staff on capital improvement recommendations that impact parks, REC programs. The word "facilities" is missing. That amendment was voted on on August 16th by Alderman Begley. It was seconded by Alderman Key, and it should be, and it was motion, and it was agreed on, so somehow it was left out of this ordinance, and I'd like to make sure that that does get included in tonight's proceedings. I wanted to thank the city council for the time that you've spent on this, which obviously was way too much time, and Linda Sciapa, who is the chair of our committee, could not be here tonight because she had a previous meeting with Women's Club tonight. She asked me to read this. She said she is sorry on behalf that she wasn't here. On the behalf of the REC Advisory Board, I would like to thank everyone who has devoted so much time and energy to the development of this new REC Advisory Board ordinance. We recognize it has truly been an investment of everyone's time and energy. My hope is now that we can all move forward from this and put the same dedication and energy into continuing to grow our list together, a list which boasts a great accomplishment for our parks and our recreation department, not only for our residents, but for the community at large as well. Can only give us all a better place to live, work, and play, a healthier life physically and mentally. Thank you for your time. Obviously, we all want the best city we can have, from, you can see the people that are here tonight, and thank you again for your time on my behalf.
Thanks, Denise. Anyone else on this side?
Good evening. I'm Don Borshaw. I'm the owner of the Haven Indoor Golf, and I'm here to encourage you to support the parking lot expansion at 123rd and 71st Court. We are located in the southeast corner of 123rd and Harlem. We opened last December, and we are a new business. We spent money improving our storefront and investing in our businesses. I believe our space looks better, both inside and out. You may recall, the space was vacant for close to 20 years, and we opened last December. In order to attract new businesses to downtown Palis, the parking situation definitely needs to be improved. You've heard from various residents reporting on the number of parking spaces at the municipal lot and other additional spaces are not needed. I can tell you, as a new business owner, and I've heard directly from customers, that is not the case. The parking in this area does need to be improved. The city has spent many hours and dollars developing a plan that works for the city as a whole. While everyone has a right to be heard, please don't let a few vocal residents overweight the overall benefit to the city. You also have an example of how this parking lot will work. Across the street on the west side of Harlem is a similar parking structure to what is proposed on the east side. There have been no safety issues or noise complaints raised with that parking structure. Your choices are a well-designed and safe parking lot, or vacant parking building, or vacant stores along Harlem Avenue. Unless the parking situation is improved, the city will not be able to attract new businesses. In fact, I've heard from several business owners along this strip that if the parking situation is not improved, more than likely, they will not renew their lease, and they will look to move elsewhere.
Good evening. I'm Todd Rivasco, 7331 West Kiowa Lane in Palis Heights. I'm also the vice president of the Chamber of Commerce. You have a decision tonight to make, in the best interest of all Palis Heights, not just one little park. We are a community that's small, made up of local businesses that are owned by people trying to make a living. This is not a chain store community. It's not a Orland Park, and these people work hard, they have a business, and they need parking. As a resident myself, when I go to dine or shop, it's a nightmare to park, and it needs to be addressed. It's in the best interest of the town, of the city, that we look for everybody's best interest, not just a few residents. And I understand the concern of people who live near there, but it's also part of change for the city to keep improving. So, it's a decision you have to make, that's why you're elected, and I hope you do what's best for the whole city. Thank you.
Mike Coogan, owner of Franklin's Public House, also a 23-year resident of Palis Heights. I have nothing prepared, but I just want to echo Bob Grosshart, I think he did a great job on that presentation, so thank you. There was a plan done. You guys voted for it overwhelmingly. Then there was a purchased lot, voted overwhelmingly. I don't understand why we're deviating from that particular thought. It's well-conceived, it's well-engineered. Change is hard, and I've always said, if anybody's ever talked to you about Palis Heights, I've always said, one of the best things about this community is we all give a hoot, and that's where all the opinion comes from. And I think that's actually a wonderful thing. So, I get it. I understand the concerns, but I know that those concerns, some of them, are not as concerning to me, because I see the parking lot that's in use right now, and there are no concerns there. It works. I can envision a town a few years from now with additional parking that's bustling and much better than it is now. The east side of Harlem is stuck in the '60s. All you have to do is look at it. We need change. We need to move forward. You guys are the ones to vote. What's the alternative? Nobody has an alternative, because we don't need one. We have a 2019 comprehensive plan that everybody kind of needs to abide by. We have no other alternative. The two alternatives that were proposed were worser plans. This is a very well-designed, well-engineered, and expensive parking lot study that hasn't been approved yet. I don't even know why this is, I understand the concerns, but to Bob's point, why are we still debating this? This moves the city forward. This does not do anything but positive things for the city. So I urge you, the ones that are considering to vote no, I urge you to vote yes, reconsider your vote. I understand the neighborhood's concerns, but I know from a fact that it works. The city parking lots will be well landscaped, well-maintained. I know the city of Palis Heights, you go up and down Harlem Avenue, and I'm on it every day, there's not a minute that goes by that I don't see a police officer or a streets-and-sand truck. They're going to take care of that lot. And I think the concerns from the residents, certainly valid, but from my perspective, having the other lot on the west side of Harlem, it works. It's not as fearful as it's being put forth, and we need to move the city forward. And that's not just for me owning the business across the street, because I don't have a direct benefit. But as a resident of 23 years, we need to move the city forward. We're stuck. Where do we go from here if we don't approve this? There's no alternative plan. And regarding the art park, I believe it's owned by ComEd. I don't think it's owned by the city, just to note. So, thank you very much. Please vote yes.
My name's Brad Lorch. I live at 12312 South 71st Avenue. Been in that home for 30 years. I believe this gentleman here made a perfect point. The residents have been at every meeting since March 4th regarding this. Where are these so-called businesses that are going to suffer from this? I mean, where are they? How come they're not here making their case? There's obviously the gentleman from the golf place, I know, I understand his There's obviously the gentleman from the golf place, I know, I understand his concern, but his problem is he's got another business who's basically parking in his places. Why isn't this business here making the case? At least, you know, to me, then it just shows, do they really want this? Or is this something that the city council just wants to do because it's part of this quote, "master plan," which frankly should be looked at? And Mr. Coogan, I understand, he owns the business on the other side of the street. So, again, I'm a little confused on why he's, why he is pushing this unless he has an interest in some of the open storefronts that maybe he's looking to convert or something. Again, I'm not sure, but it's just, I'm just trying to get a handle on why the business that supposedly are going to benefit from this, besides the one gentleman from the golf place, why haven't they been here? You know, it's just, who, who wants this? I know two gentlemen, aldermen voted not to drop the ordinance, and, you know, I definitely thank them. They actually, to me, you know, have the traits of what the aldermen should have in Palos Heights. You know, don't look at just the business community. First of all, when you look at Harlem Avenue, how many quote, "opportunities," even if you did fill those stores, you know, we're talking thirty parking places. I think you're going to have to do a lot more than that if they quote, "want to grow," like the gentleman just said. Palos Heights is not like Orland Park. People like to come to Palos Heights because it has that small-town feel. We don't want a bunch of residential stores, you know, increased traffic, you know, things like that. So, people pretty much go to other places as well for their, their needs, and I don't see where this development of Harlem Avenue is going to basically, you know, diminish what's, you know, the business community today. So, again, if you all have it in your hearts, like these two aldermen, Mr. Violet and Mr. Bassel, who are actually, you know, listen to our concerns, you know, that's the other thing. The gentleman that spoke first said that there were myths. You know, frankly, I find that very offensive. These are not myths. We are concerned residents, and we want what's best for our city. And I think if, you know, you went to the drawing board and looked at all their solutions, just like what Dan Nicholson said, it would be a win-win and not a win-lose situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Yes, sir.
Brian Grody, one-two-two-three-one, South Seventy-first Court. I talked last time, and Bob had brought up a few points, and I just wanted to talk about it, just to kind of clear there. I did mention rooftop tap. I was not aware that this parking lot will not be allowing those cars to park there or the motorcycles. She's got young kids, less than two, three. I don't know if you guys have ever felt the vibration under her house shake from a motorcycle that close, revving it in the middle of the night. Kids wake up, she's going to be struggling. I live on the other side, of course, right behind rooftop tap, where if you do want to build it to become this glamorous, you know, I guess called La Grange, Downers Grove that we've talked about, and, you know, he makes a good point. I, personally, I think the east side, it does look like crap. The lots need to be fixed, but there's a price. There's a price. Is Palos going to pay to refurbish that whole thing, make it a brand-new-looking center to get people in? Is, or is that our tax dollars? Are we hoping to use a field-of-drains approach where we, we build a parking lot, they will come? We're going in the middle of a recession. I think we're already there. I follow a lot of economists. I do a lot of risk analytics, and this is going to be a struggle, a two, three-year struggle that we're in, and I don't know who's going to want to do construction with, you know, prime close to ten percent and this coming. How soon is this going to happen? My fearful is that you're going to then get this approved, then you're going to put a lot next to my house, and then it's going to be that approach where they're going to come. And yes, rents are going to probably go up. Have we done a revenue study to see if this is already done? How much it's going to add to the burrito place? How much it's going to add to the Haven? How much money is going to be? Because their rents are going to go up because everything has a price. The cost per square foot on construction and all this, it's going to be astronomical, these businesses, and that's what I said last time. It could hurt small business. I'm not going to say all small business is going to go away, but it's going to be hard to attract people at new rents. My sister-in-law lives in La Grange. We go there, we frequent there. I used to go to a lot of small shops there. It's had a lot of attrition over the years. It's come and go, and it worries me that we're going to be in that same boat. And I just hope that you guys vote no to this. I still think there's a lot to, to be done. Where do the employees park? If you were to put a lot, could this be an employee-only lot? Who knows? I'm just trying to think of anything. Is it going to be surveillance where somebody could back up right behind our house in the dark and just go right in our back, back of our house, and there's no, no surveillance to see who did it or where it came from? So, there's a lot of concerns, a lot of open items, and I just think it's too soon to even consider building a lot. It's thirty spots, thirty parking spots. It's just, it's ridiculous to me, so I hope you vote no.
Anyone else?
I'll speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I wasn't planning on speaking, but after hearing my neighbors speak, I decided I should come forward as someone who walks along there about four times a day, and if I go after four P.M., I can name four separate occasions where my young children were almost hit by customers leaving Capri, because I imagine they drank their four bottles of wine and were leaving and didn't see my seven-year-old crossing Harlem. Basically, my concern is if you put this parking lot in, those drivers are now going to be driving closer to where I live with, at one hundred twenty-third and Seventieth Avenue. And my husband and I bought our home two years ago. We moved from Beverly, and our big concern was the lack of sidewalks in Palos. But over the past two years, we've gotten used to it, and everyone I talk to who bring up their concern about moving there for the lack of sidewalks, I tell them, we don't get a lot of traffic. But if you put this parking lot in, I imagine that will change. So, I ask you to consider keeping outsiders and drunk drivers out of my neighborhood. Thank you.
Your name and address?
Sarah, Sarah Doherty, one hundred twenty-third and Seventieth Avenue.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving right along, finance committee?
Mr. Mayor, we have item number seven, and I'll read that, and then I'm going to make a comment. This is a motion to adapt the intergovernmental agreement providing a loan of up to five hundred and seventy-five thousand to the Palos Heights Public Library.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McGrogan, second by Alderman Key.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, so, the committees that this went through, it went through favorably, and so that no one gets the wrong interpretation on what's happening with the public library because it's in good shape, and they're remodeling, and they're spending money over there. And one of the ways that they pay for that is through the tax dollars that are generated by all the residents in this town. And unfortunately, because of a little bit of the politics, I think, that goes involved with, within Illinois and of course Cook County, the tax bills for all of us as residents, as we know, are not out, and the second installment's coming in right after the election, which is very coincidental. And so, because of that, the public library doesn't have the money to finish off and pay the contractors that do the work. And so, there's other ways that they could borrow the money, and that would be, you know, we could send them to a bank, and they're going to charge interest. If interest that, or the state actually has programs, all that does is just would make this five seventy-five number bigger, and guess who pays for that? The people in the audience. And so, we're not going to charge them any interest because this is almost a fait accompli. They are really in need of this because they don't want to make, they want to keep the work going, and we want to make sure the Palos keeps its good reputation because we have the money to pay them. And so, when we vote on this, that's the background on it, and it's, I don't want anybody to feel that, and call the library and say, "You guys going out of business." And interestingly enough, before the meeting, one of the reasons we're late, we get this, all the aldermen get this, and it just came in, and I was reading it, and there's a section about property taxes. And lo and behold, Illinois, it was very timely because it has a whole bunch of pages with graphs and stuff. If you look at this one, this red line, you see the red line? It's the second from the top of all fifty states. Guess what line that ties into? Illinois, we have the second highest property taxes in the country. And so, hopefully, when you, and just do some pre-planning on your own, because you're going to get this first installment very soon, right after the election. And then, you're going to get the next installment in the early spring. So, you really are going to have to budget, you know, especially as some of the people mentioned with this economy and everything going on, and like some of the people in the audience, some of the finance business, I understand it. It's going to be tough because you're going to get back-to-back bills, and they're going to be higher on the installment. So, with that, I just thought it was a good time to bring that up so that people are aware of what these delayed bills are causing. It's not only to the residents, but even to the library and to the city.
As I mentioned in the last meeting, this is a problem that's facing not, it's a cash flow problem that's facing not only our library district because of the construction, but any single source taxing body, you know, whether it be a school, a fire district, where their total source, their total revenue source comes from real estate taxes. And so, this is how they pay their, all their bills. I was in a meeting today with President Preckwinkle, and they're hoping that the assessor and the board review will get these tax bills out by year-end. And there's no guarantee of that, but as Mike said, one of the problems, if they don't get out by year-end, is you lose, you may lose the deductibility for your real estate taxes for this year and get hit with three payments next year. You'll have your second, your second installment this year, two installments from, for next year, and could put you over the salt limit, too. So, that's another whole complication. But the, the idea is, this is more of a cash flow problem, as Mike had said, so just make it clear that it's nothing to do with stability. So, with that, roll call.
Alderman Bassel.
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda.
No, we're voting.
Number of finance, number seven.
Say yes.
Sorry.
Sorry. Lost your way. Yes or no?
It's a yes.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
What's going on here? Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, that's the end of the report. Right, thank you, Mike. Public Safety, Alderman Bassel.
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda. However, they did get a late notice this afternoon from the deputy chief Chikowski for your information, and for your information, on the morning of Thursday, October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, the Illinois State Police will be using the house at one twenty-three oh-three South Seventy-first Court for canine training. The handlers and canines will conduct interior searches of the home to sniff out simulated drugs and contraband. The training should last only a couple of hours. So, if you see some activity at that corner, you'll know what that's about.
Should we keep kids away from the?
It's a one-time deal, two hours.
They're ferocious canines.
Pardon?
They're ferocious canines. We keep children away?
We just got this from the police.
Just got this.
Ask any advice. I live right there.
So, it was an FYI, and that's.
I would do so.
End of my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Public grounds and property.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I just wanted to commend the Public Works Department for their work on the city's landscaping for the, this fall season. I think everything looks really great. I do have a motion this evening to approve payment for the installation of a new rotary lift in the Public Works Garage with Rotary Lift Vehicle Service Group, LLC, in the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the carpet installation in the new Channel Four studio from Apostrophe Design in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to approve the service door improvements in the new Channel Four studio from the door authority in the amount of six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
This is, this is a note, this is all in relation to the new building they're moving into.
That's correct, Alderman Clifford. It's to the, where the Southwest Dispatch Center used to be, there's three different door improvements that are going to be made over there.
Yeah, some people, it's from here to remodel over here.
That's correct.
No, this is.
I also have a motion to approve payment to CNC Landscapes for landscaping work at the Art Garden and at City Hall in the amount of ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley, second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Lastly, I have a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement between Cook County and the city of Palos Heights for fiber optic right-of-entry and fiber optic carrier equipment pop site. And if I could just comment on what that is really quickly. The county received a grant to place fiber optic services in through some municipalities. They've requested that we enter an agreement with them at the, at the police department, and we may or may not use that as our primary internet service. And I'll let you know moving forward, we probably will suggest that we stick with Comcast for at least some time to ensure that this is a compatible service and it's, it's working appropriately. But that being said, in order to kind of keep the system moving, it would be a little, a device that's installed at the police department.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Begley and second by Alderman Lewandowski. Discussion, roll call.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
That's the end of my report this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Planning, zoning, Alderman McGovern?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First, number thirteen on the agenda is motion to adapt, adapt an ordinance approving a zoning change from our residents to the B business and granting a special use permit for purposes of constructing and operating a special use municipal parking lot at one two-three-zero-three South Seventy-first Court, pin number two-four-three-zero-three-zero-one dash zero-zero-one.
Second.
You know, there's been lots of discussion, as we said. Some of the people are saying it's going big all the way to March. I think both sides have done an excellent case study in presenting both their views. Many of the facts are correct, not all of them on either side. But I do think as a city, all the people up here do listen. And we try to accommodate and work together. And in one presentation, they actually alluded to that, which was a good point. And, and I, and believe me, in the last several weeks, a lot of people that are sitting up here have discussed this individually with, like, this is an interesting vote. And as many of us are at various committees, I know, I for one, I was chairman of license permits and franchises for over 15 years, which basically was mostly pro-development and, you know, with people, residents, we listen. They have driveway concerns, easements, variances with the fence, pools, you name it. It's been their, Brent, his committee now, he's chairman, so he has that distinction of handling all those issues. However, and the city has approved quite a few things. And, you know, if you look back, going back to like even Dominix, all the other businesses, Mike Coogan's property that he's built and invested money in town, and many other people, the golf store, which has the driving range. And so the city does work from both sides to try to accommodate both business and the residents almost, like, almost every issue. I think people look at it, and you try to put yourself in the other person's shoes. And we should probably always do that on most everything we do. But, so in this case, I think there's been some interesting items that came up. And even some of those items have been discussed amongst the aldermen as to, was the plan, when we acquired the lot under the comprehensive plan, it went through pretty rapidly when we had a, a meeting of all these people up here saying, should we get it or not? Because it's always good to control the, some property, and the city has the financial wherewithal, which you're well aware of, to handle that acquisition. And I think some of the aldermen maybe were not aware that, like, right away, that it was going to be, like, moving at this speed to get a parking lot. And at least, I'll just say that on my behalf. And I'll let the other aldermen speak on their own. So I do think that some of the suggestions that have come up from both sides are all good. But I do really feel that, you know, maybe the best course of action here is to, like, analyze this more appropriately. One guy here was at one residence, a financial analyst or analytical analyst. I think he made some good points. And so to me, you know, I think there's other opportunities. I know some of the other aldermen who we've talked with over the last couple of weeks. Unfortunately, I wasn't here for the last meeting, or maybe fortunately. And I just feel that this would really maybe sit better for the business community as well as the residents if we try to explore, like, coming up with a better solution. I mean, to me, this is not going to turn out well for the residents. And I don't think anybody in the room here would say, I'll volunteer my house to have a parking lot next door. And if you do, I don't think you should be sitting up here. And so to me, I would like to refer this back to the Building and Grounds Committee for further review. And hopefully, there'll be some other people that are sitting up here that would agree with me.
I'll second the motion, since I'm on the Buildings and Grounds.
Okay. Moved by Alderman McGrogan, second by Alderman Begley to refer back to Buildings and Grounds? Okay. But actually, it's a planning and zoning now.
Pardon me?
It's a planning and zoning now.
Well, like, we were, I was discussing with some of the other aldermen, and we were wondering if it should maybe go to Building and Grounds. But I mean, if it, or planning and zoning, if you think it's more appropriate, we'll make, I'll amend my motion, and I'm sure that we can just change it to...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. It's zoned right now for residential, so without it being rezoned, what could we do with it other than just keep a house there?
Nothing.
And have canine units go through it or whatever?
Possibly make it a park or whatever.
We can't do that without rezoning it.
Right.
So to a family that wants to move to Palis Heights, because they're waiting there.
Technically, you don't have to rezone it to have a parking lot.
Oh. Well, if you wanted to go to planning and zoning, I'll make a motion.
I can make one comment on just what...
Go ahead, Heather.
As Buildings and Grounds, I, I guess, the way that the current rendering is, I feel like it's kind of not what we envision as what we want on that property, right? And I think for the residents, don't want that on the property. And so I think that if we have an opportunity, and I'm, this is just off the cuff, based on what you've said right now, frankly.
Right.
But I think if we have more discussion about what this is going to potentially look like, and, and more input as far as what gardens are on there, what fences are on there, what this, you know, is this going to be permeable pavers, is this going to be asphalt? What does that look like? I don't know if that's maybe a more proactive way to approach this, so that it's more palatable. Because I think we do need a holistic approach. I, I don't think this is a residence versus commercial enterprise project. I mean, I don't think it's like an either-or. I think it's, it's both. It's, what can we do better for Palis Heights?
Well, it can, it can be referred to Buildings and Grounds. I mean, it can be referred.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, to me, it just made sense because the city does own it. And for most of the things like you just approved, you know, and I think, you know, we just had, you know, promotion eight to 12 different things. It went through Building and Grounds. And I was just thinking that might be more appropriate. Plus, you know, I think that some of the comments about alternative uses or a mixed use, maybe there's a way that you could have parking and, like, a nice area for the residents as well. You know, maybe there's a fountain, paper bricks, a place for kids. I mean, you know, there's all sorts of options, you know, that we could come up with. Where the overflow, like, it could be utilized during the daytime when, like, like, some of the aldermen went over there today and were telling me that, like, there was plenty of spots all over the place, you know, during the day. In the evening, it might be a different story. If you went over there at the NCAA tournament in March, you're not going to be able to get a parking spot. But maybe they could use the overflow spots for a couple hours, you know, when they're watching a basketball game. And so, you know, and that goes and it ties in with some of the comments about why don't you work together within, you know, to see if you can come up with some type of, like, you know, a contract between both of them, the city, the residents, and maybe everybody wins, instead of having this division, which nobody likes. And so that's, you know...
The motion right now is to just approve the special, the zoning in the special use. Now, if you want to refer it back to Buildings and Grounds, anything other than becoming a parking lot, no matter what it is, it's got to go back for another hearing with them, so.
It's got to go back to, it's got to go back to planning and zoning.
So you were saying, refer back to planning and zoning versus Buildings and Grounds?
Yeah.
Whatever you guys want to do. I'm just saying that I'll entertain it if you guys want to bring it to me.
All right.
Can you refer to both of them?
No.
Okay.
I think we, we've discussed this over and over again. And in, in zoning, we were presented with three possibilities.
The other possibility?
We were, we were never, here's a parking lot. We, we asked for alternative things. And the other two plans that were presented to us, not only were significantly more money, but they, you know, the property that runs along the streets does not belong to the residents. There's easement on every street. And both of the other plans called for dealing with the berm that's already there, plus going into the people's yards. That's why we rejected those, because we don't, we don't want to use more property. If you, if you think that the residents are hollering now, and then to say that we're going to put a park of some description with parking there, then we go back to what Bob Grocer was just saying. Parking is parking. It doesn't matter whether it's, you know, you put 10 spots around a fountain, it's still parking. It's still cars pulling in there. It's still, you know...
Yeah, the, the only motion is to refer, to refer, well, right now, there's a motion to refer. But the motion on the floor before that was to approve it as a parking lot. If it, if it's something else other than a parking lot, that's not a new point here, because that's, that's not the case.
Right, so...
I mean, you can refer it back to the planning and zoning, but if it comes back, it's still got to come back to parking.
Nothing's going to happen, what I'm saying is, nothing's going to happen in zoning, because all it takes is two, two votes to get it back here. And then it, it's, what we're going to do is have a bunch of speeches again.
I'm not sure, if I could just respond to Alderman Key's comments. I, I think our role here is to make decisions that benefit our community. And if, if we vote, have a vote on this parking lot as it is tonight, it's not going, it's very evident that that's not us. Now we're at nothing. So we can come up with an agreement as a group here tonight that is going to continue to engage the conversation. Even if that's uncomfortable, we can engage with the residents, we can engage with the business owners to come up with a plan that works for this property the city's purchased.
Heather, your point's well taken, but my point is that even if it goes back to planning and zoning, no matter where it goes, if it comes back for a final vote, the final vote can only be on using it as a parking lot.
I got you, I understand.
Because that's the way the motion was...
I understand.
But in the meantime, Mr. Mayor, that...
I mean, you can come up with other alternatives, but then it's got to go back for, we have to reject this motion and go back for another hearing to use it as a park, or whatever you're going to use it as.
It's Alderman Key suggested, we looked at two or three, you know, options. Maybe there's, should be seven options. There's eight, or five, or two, whatever. But, you know, so maybe we didn't look at all the options. And maybe, you know what?
But I'm just telling you procedurally what's got to be done.
I, I get it, and I'm on the same page.
The thing is...
I'm asking, I'm going to ask a question right now first. If, I suggest we vote on this plan tonight because that will kill this plan if it doesn't get six votes.
Right.
Then, from there, we can bring it back brand new.
Start over again.
And start over all the way back at the, at the Planning and Zoning Board.
Right, to use it for whatever...
And then we can make, then we can, then we can turn around and open it up to anything and everything we want.
Right.
Or we can just stop at, at just changing the zoning.
My, my point is, you're spinning your wheels by taking, you're spinning your wheels by sending it back to planning and zoning, because it can only come back here for this vote we have here right now.
Right, because we could accomplish the same thing what he just suggested. It would, it would, it'll die at death in the next couple of minutes when we make the vote, in my opinion.
Right.
And then we just bring it back again, and we can put it whatever...
Then we start over again.
And if you're my comment, that we either do it as a committee of the whole or go to Municipal Grounds, I don't think it should go to zoning straight away.
No, we may have to have a committee of the whole to talk about the discussion about what to use the piece for, that's it.
Actually, it does have to go back to Planning and Zoning because it's going to have to go back to the, to the...
At some point in time, it may, yeah.
It's going to have to go back to the, to the board.
But the planning process won't go to Planning and Zoning.
Point of order. I'd like to ask the city attorney a question. Did you say that this didn't need, we could make this a parking lot? What, what, without going through a lot of this? I mean, why are we doing this?
No, no, the code says that a residential zoned piece of property can be used for municipal uses. But before you establish that municipal use, it has to go to your special use process, which requires the public hearing and getting comments from the public and everything. But you don't have to rezon the property to do that.
Okay.
So it can stay R, but you have to go through the special use permitting process.
Which is the same thing a church does or a school does.
Basically, to make people aware of it.
Right.
And, and also, if, if approved, that special use just stays with that specific special use, and if it, it goes away from there, it goes away, right?
Right, that's the way the city's always done the special uses. They automatically go away if you stop using it, so.
This is one last comment about, you know, if this thing were to move forward, whether it's tonight or six months from now, if we ever make parking, every design we've seen is beautiful. Fences, landscape. We, this is not the first parking lot we've been involved in. Lighting is designed to bleed straight down, not into the parking lots. This is done at all of our parks. And if there's, you know, I'm all for allowing a, a discussion. If, if we want to use permeable pavers, or we want to do twice as much landscaping, we want to make the fence eight feet instead of six feet, you know, that, that can all be determined at some other time. In fact, I dare say, the two people that live directly next door to the thing, the parking lot, we would go to them and include them in part of the, part of that design. That, that's not what we're deciding tonight. You know, we have a, a design, but that doesn't mean we, we wouldn't change it to accommodate the residents.
Yeah, the vote right now is to use it as a parking lot.
Well, to, to zone it.
I suggest, I suggest we go on with the vote.
Well, you have a motion to refer. I'll tell you what, I mean, I withdraw my comment on referring it to whatever committee it ended up in. And we'll vote on it, and we'll see what happens. And I can tell you, I have a real good idea, we'll be visiting this again.
Well, since we own a property of a couple hundred dollars, I would dare say that that would be true.
Right.
Because we're not just going to sit on it.
Who knows? You know, we've got a recession going, maybe there'll be another option that'll pop up.
Okay.
I still feel we should just, yeah, send, send this as a vote tonight.
Okay, it's withdrawn, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move the question then, go.
Alderman Violet.
No.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
No.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
No.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
No.
Okay, motion fails.
Motion fails, okay.
Motion's not effective.
Okay.
All right.
Number 14.
Yeah, I got to go. Let's see what we have. Okay. I'm going to make a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance approving an accessory use setback variance allowed for a five-foot rear yard setback, I'm sorry, along the western leap property line in lieu of the required 10-feet yard setback of an accessory use which variances for the purpose of constructing a pool, a pool house and the mechanicals, and which variance is limited to the distance of the length of the construction pool related to the improvements on the residential property located at 12540 South 70th Avenue and contained in the following PIN 23362040110000.
A second.
Moved by Mr. McGrogan, McGovern, second by Mr. McGrogan. And Dr. Meehan's here, I know if there's any questions, right?
Change my name.
City engineer now to review that.
Everybody's signed that off, everybody's signed off on it, yeah.
Everybody's all signed off.
Okay. Motion?
In FEMA.
We don't, we don't need a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right.
Okay, now, number 15. I have a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance approving the amendments to the zoning code, specifically Title 14, Land Use, Chapter 153, Zoning Code, Section 153.O3, definitions as contained in the attached draft language.
Moved by Alderman McGovern, second by, somebody?
Suck.
Clifford, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You guys seem like you're all burned out here. Got to see my girl burned out here, come on, keep going. Recreation, alderman Key.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want, before I make this, this motion, I do want to apologize, there was, I think we all caught it this week immediately when we saw our packets, but what happened was several weeks ago, we, alderman, Begley, I was going to call you Heather. Heather asked us to amend to include facilities. But what happened was, we agreed to do that, but then the, we didn't vote on it. We sent it back to committee where we further deleted a handful of items. And so inadvertently, this got, so I'm making a motion that we re-change this, so it's, it's the part thirty-four point fifty-four A, after the word park, to put the word facility, and then thirty-four point fifty-four B, both one and three, after the word park, put the word facility.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Boo by alderman Key, seconded by alderman Violet, amended, discussion? Roll call?
Yeah. A and then B one, B three. Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Okay, with that then, I'll make a motion to adopt the amending, so we're adopting the ordinance amending city code, section thirty-four fifty, point fifty to thirty-four point fifty-four pertaining to the RAB.
Mayor, can I make an, ask for an amendment on that also?
Right, okay.
I would like, section thirty-four point fifty-one, authority to, to adopt the regulations, I'd like to make a motion to amend section thirty-four fifty-one to read, the RAB shall, with approval of the administrative staff, have the authority to propose rules and procedures governing the proceedings and conduct proceedings in accordance with the rules. The reason I ask for this is, it says in it right now that it should be the rec committee. Well, the rec committee only meets once a month. If they are able to go to, directly to the administrative staff, you save a lot of time, a lot of trouble, and actually volunteers are under the administrative staff anyway. So that's my reason for doing it.
And the, and the RAB meets every other month, that's not going to be a problem. And this is the third time I'm walking in this room with the entire recreation committee and others, and you're, you're just being an obstructionist. You're being manipulated by someone.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
The vote went to six to one last time and, and so why didn't you bring it up last time? Because now it's going to be something else. And the next time it'll be something else. This, our committee has vetted this thing. We, we haven't just, you know, decided one day, hey, let's cause some trouble and do this.
Your committee, who has never gone, how many members of your committee have ever been to an RAB?
I've been several.
How many?
You know what, Jerry? I don't, I don't respond. I just said, I've been to them. And, but I'll tell you what, once again, and I'll say it from last time, you're talking to people outside of our committees, outside of this chamber, and for another two weeks, instead of calling me, who's the chairman of the committee, and we'll discuss it, but you don't, because you're getting manipulated by an outside force. Yeah, because why haven't you called me? If you're so concerned with this, why haven't you called me?
There's a motion to amend it.
This is ridiculous.
Is there a second? Time for like a second, okay. Any motion is to approve? Go.
This is for the actual adaption.
Who's moved it?
With the facility.
With the facility.
Yes.
Move by alderman Key, is there a second?
Second.
Second by alderman Begley. Roll call.
Is this to move the ordinance as amended?
Yes, right.
Okay. Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
No.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve the ASLID grant agreement for Orchard Park.
Move by alderman Key.
Second.
Second by alderman Violet, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Rules of construction, Alderman Clifford.
No report, but just an update, signalization at the rec center flashing yellow caution sign, hopefully be installed soon. And the Ridgeland Avenue corridor medium has all been approved now, and the finanities with IDOT have been finalized, so work should be, work schedule should be coming up soon on the work of removing the mediums there, and that's it.
All right. License permits and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, water and sewer, alderman Violet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve foundation repairs at the Misty Meadows Water Tower with total waterproofing incorporated in the amount of $7,350.
Second.
Move by alderman Violet, second by alderman McGovern. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
I also move to approve payment for professional services with LAN for the Seventieth Avenue
Lift Station rehabilitation from June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, through September second, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of $10,246.50.
Move by alderman Violet, is there a second?
Second.
Second by alderman Begley, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes. I move to approve payment for professional services with RJN Group for the twenty twenty-two and OnCall sewer system services through September second, twenty twenty-two, and for the twenty nineteen GAS services OnCall through September second, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of $4,220.
Move by alderman Violet, is there a second?
Second.
Second by alderman Begley, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yep.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
And I move to approve payment for professional services with Strand Associates for the College Drive sixteen-inch water main CIP for the month of August and for the IEP A project plan for the month of August in the amount of $15,031.54.
Move by alderman Violet, second by Alderman Clifford, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes. And finally, I move to approve payment for professional services with Emmy Simpson Incorporated for valves assessed and exercised between September sixth, twenty twenty-two to September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of $12,384.
Second.
Move by alderman Violet, second by alderman Begley, discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.